Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City Council meeting, and I would ask the clerk to please call roll.
Cook?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Odenenl?
Yes.
Patterson?
Richardson?
Here.
Aaron Scott?
Here.
Bill Scott?
Here.
Wonkel?
Here.
Wormowski?
Williams?
Here.
Mayor Edder?
Here.
City Attorney Beard? You have the form.
Very good. Is there a reading of the minutes this evening?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes as circulated.
Very good. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
For Hopkins, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Presentation of petitions?
No petitions, no communications, and the claims are in the hands of the alderman.
Is there a motion to pay claims? Alderman Scott, Bill Scott, second by Alderman Lawrence Odenenl. All those in favor of paying the claims, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Mayor's report, item number one is the appointment of Eddie Lowe to the Jacksonville Commission on Disabilities and Human Relations. Is there a motion for Mr. Lowe, Alderman Bill Scott, second by Alderman Aaron Scott? All those in favor of appointing Eddie Lowe, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? City Clerk's report?
The items that were presented to you via email, Community Development Report, City Clerk's Cash Receipt Report, City Clerk's General Fund Report, and the City Clerk's General Fund Revenue Report, all for June 30, 2018. There's any questions on any of those, please stop by my office, and we'll see if we can answer them.
Okay, I'm gonna amend the agenda a little bit. We've got a lot of new faces in here, so we're gonna go right into the consent agenda. Finance, IT, and personnel. Alderman Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we have two items. First item is a resolution authorizing payments from the Capital Improvement Fund for certain improvement projects. The second one is a resolution authorizing payments from the General Fund for Services.
In public protection, Alderman Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three. First one is resolution authorizing waiver of advertisement for bids and accepting proposal for purchase of three bouyard thermal emitters for the Jacksonville Fire Department. A resolution authorizing a waiver of advertisement for bids for accepting proposals for the Hearst hydraulic tombe tool for the Jacksonville Fire Department substation. And resolution authorizing a waiver of advertisement for bids and accepting proposal for upgrade to the fire and EMS reporting software.
Very good. And utility, Alderman Wonkel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items tonight. Number one, resolution authorizing payments from the Water Works Rogers Project Fund for services rendered improvement projects. Number two, resolution awarding bid for the Webster Street Water Main Replacement Project, Phase Two, and ISO move.
Is there a second, Alderman Cook? You've heard the items under the consent agenda. Is there any you wish to pull for further discussion at this time? Seeing none, I would ask the clerk to please call roll on the consent agenda.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Odenenl?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Aaron Scott?
Yes.
Bill Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Wormowski?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Committee reports this evening, and there's one item, and it's utility. Alderman Wonkel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item, resolution authorizing city funds for a shared portion of the permitting and design of an in-lake sediment dam at Lake Movistar contingent upon receipt of a Section 319 grant from the IEPA with... Whereas estimated cost for designing permitting portion would be approximately $350,000 with the city and the IEPA splitting the cost 50/50, assuming the grant is awarded. And ISO move.
And is there a second? Alderman Hopkins. This is new to me, so I'm Dan Beard right now. Resolution, IEPA 319 application. Be it resolved that the city authorizes an IEPA 319 grant application for design and planning for the in-lake sediment dam at a city cost not to exceed... $175,000. I'm glad I don't do this for... Glad Dan does that. Any discussion on that? I would ask the clerk to please call roll.
Odenenl?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Aaron Scott?
Yes.
Bill Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Wormowski?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And Mike, I don't know why they put that under yours, but you read things so well. Can you do the next one?
Good, Ed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number two under utility, first reading of an ordinance providing for the regulation of and application for small wireless facilities, and ISO move.
Is there a second? Alderman Aaron Scott? Small wireless facilities. Be it ordained that the Small Wireless Facilities Ordinance is hereby approved. Discussion? I would ask the clerk to please call roll.
Richardson?
Yes.
Aaron Scott?
Yes.
Bill Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Wormowski?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Odenenl?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, new business. We'll quickly get some new business, or any old business, I'm sorry. I've got one old business that I want to report on that Kelly talked with you, Kelly Hall, last meeting about some upgrades at the Community Park Center, the CPC, and he was... The seniors have gotten back with him that use that facility regularly and often, and we're glad they do, but they have graciously committed to giving the city $5,000 for help with the ACA upgrade, so we appreciate that. Just wanted to let you know that they know that it's a good place for them, and they want to help us out, so, yes.
I wonder if I emailed Kelly and told her I didn't hear back, but I was wondering if you could check her for the next meeting down the report. Some people were concerned about Duncan Park with the tree that fell down.
Yeah, I can kind of help with that. Actually, I received an email two or three weeks ago from a resident that lives on State Street, that right across the street from Duncan Park, that sees a lot of things, and she said she had big-time concerns about the limbs. And I initiated, I forwarded that email to Kelly and to Adam, and they had planned on Turner Tree Service to come out on Monday to do an inventory and look at the trees. Well, guess what happened last Friday? A big tree fell, and thank goodness it was five o'clock in the morning, and it didn't hurt anybody. So it was already scheduled, so Turner did the tree inventory the other day, and they'll continue to, and then we'll bring something back to the council. But there's definitely... It's a catch-22. Things are gonna get... There's gonna be some trees coming down, and people aren't gonna like it, but we can't have a... You know, something happen to the folks at play there, so...
Someone mentioned that the tree next to the lot that fell down, Kelly could have been...
Right.
But I just like to point out that the Duncan Park Association of Duncan Mansion, the John Power, over the years, they've been raising funds to put in replacement trees.
Yeah.
So those trees are not gonna live forever, they don't grow up in the sky.
Right.
So it's really good that they're planning to replace them.
I agree.
As you can see, about how many trees are in the park.
So more to come on that, but we are addressing it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other old business or new business? Okay, at this time, we'll go back up to the agenda, and we'll have public comment, and I see a number of folks that probably want to talk today, but right now, Gary, or however you want to lead off. I know you signed the sheet. Reverend John is... Jonathan's here, and Ron's kind of been the spokesman from the get-go, so Ron, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. I'm Ron Hofstadt. Live in Prairie Nole, 17 years. I was here not too long ago, talked to you folks. Well, since that time, things got worse. Didn't think it could, but it did. So now, this outfit out of Florida, by the way, they don't own any homes or parks in Florida because they don't... They have rent control there. So, but they do pick on towns that don't, you know, don't have that luxury, and there's many, many states that have this rent control thing. So we've come up with another alternative, and we found out another way to kind of get around things. Rent stabilization. Small town or community can put out a rent stabilization where they can zero in on a small community like we have, trailer parks and manufactured homes. So there is that avenue. It can be passed. Okay, so just to kind of brush up on what's happening, our new contract, they offered us one and gave us 90-day notice, and that was that 395 that we talked about the last time I was here, or 365, excuse me. Since then, on the 3rd of this month, we... They mailed all of us, we all got this contract for $465, and that was for... On a two-year contract for the first year. Also, that rent and a deposit of $465, which brings it up quite a ways, you know, over $900 for your first payment, which, how many people could afford that? But I haven't found any, not a one yet, in our community. So that second year of that first-year contract goes to $51150, and from the $260 that I'm paying, and I pay the highest lot rent there now, that just happens to be a 96.51% increase from the $260. The third year goes up 25% to $639.38, so that's approximately 145.90% increase over the $260 we're paying now. The fourth year, if we... I don't think there'll be anybody there, but let's... This is what they want for the fourth year, $799.23, that's a 25% increase, approximately 207.35% increase over the $260 that we're paying now. We've had three increases in 17 years I've been there, and the first one was 20 bucks, and the last two were $15. Three in 17 years. Now, all of a sudden, this outfit, they're on a run, buy up all these places they can get cheap enough. So, the fifth year is 999.4 cents a month, a 284% increase over the $260 that we're paying now. They also want us to come up with a half-a-million-dollar insurance policy. Part of that will be fire and... What's the other part?
Liability.
Liability. Liability type. And they are the ones, that has to be in their name. We pay for it, but they put it in their name. So let's say that we leave our houses, and all of a sudden, somehow, one of them burns down, that they don't think is worth fixing up, maybe. One of those houses burns down, they get to get the money from the insurance company. I mean, this is ridiculous. Then they also want to have a renters' insurance. Well, what? We rent the lot? That's their lot. We have to pay for a $20,000 renters' insurance to cover the lot. I mean, these people are like Castopols, you know? I think we're dealing with Adolf Hitler or something. It's ridiculous. Now, they bought out four in Springfield. I think their lot rent, last I heard, because it could've went up too, just like ours did, from 365 to 465, was 425, and they've got some old, old trailer parks there, pretty much like Rolling Acres. Rolling Acres, we got people there. I got one lady there pays $100 a month. She's in her 90s, on oxygen, in a trailer, on a wedge-shaped, high-shaped lot, real small lot, down near the railroad tracks where it floods every year. She has other people go out and get her groceries for her. She pays $100 a month rent. She's... She has no place to go. She's done. She's fried. And it's gonna be the same way, because none of us out there... I mean, I thought the 365 was bad, but this is ridiculous. I mean, it just... Now, per year, that first year, it cost us $5,580. The second year, at the 511, we're talking about $6,138 for the two-year lease. The second year, we're paying 600... $6,138. The third year, $7,627.56. The fourth year, $9,590. And the fifth year, $11,988.48, but there won't be anybody around to pay that, I'm sure. But we can't sell our houses. The real estate people are telling everybody, you're wasting your time, nobody's gonna buy your houses when they got this lot rent to look at. Who would? Because you can buy a home anywhere in Jacksonville, and your taxes won't be $11,988 for five years, you know, compared to what we have for houses. Like, my house cost me $49,000, but my lot rent, 17 years, I've paid... I've paid for a lot if I wanted to buy a lot. We tried to buy a lot, and they said that the city, which they said that's you folks, the city said, everybody had to buy the lot, or they couldn't do it. And of course, we had a lot of renters, people there that said, we can't afford to buy a lot. We could just barely make a lot rent and take care of the building and pay our utilities, our... Excuse me. Our groceries and our meds, our medicines. So I just hope you... I know you already made a decision. I heard you made a decision already. You're not gonna do anything about this, but if you could just reconsider, it can be done. It can be done.
And that's... We touched on this at the workshop session, that's where we... And just to bring you up to speed, the research that we've done, myself and the city attorney, is that there is a state statute saying that we can't.
Rent control.
It's... Yes, the Rent Control Preemption Act, that it says that local governments can't get involved. Now, that's not to say we, as a council and mayor, we're gonna get involved. I mean, we talked about it over there, that I'm calling Mayor Langfelder tomorrow and talking with him about the Springfield situation, and if they're doing anything over there, I'm gonna call the Attorney General's Office and talk with my contact over there to see if they've had other calls that this outfit has bought through the state of Illinois, and if they've had complaints. You know, I called timeout once, and they referred me to their lawyer, and I didn't feel like talking to their lawyer, but I'll try again, and maybe I'll feel like talking to the lawyer, because I... We hear you loud and clear. We know it's gonna be a very big burden. We won't like the impact. The city will not like that to... For all of you that you're going through this, but we all collectively, I, you know, I want to write a letter to the company and say, take another crack at them and say, I don't... I don't think you fully understand the impact on these folks. This is not Jacksonville, Florida. This is Jacksonville, Illinois. And, you know, kind of go down the list and say, you know, we've... EMI left us. Craft left us. You know, we've had a lot of industry leave us, and, you know, now you're coming in here and you're buying where you live, you're buying the other, you purchased a new trailer park behind the Jiffy Stop on Tendik, you know, to try to really reiterate to them, hey, cut us some slack here. And that's what we can do. We may not be able to write an ordinance to help you because of the state statute, but I think all of us can be heard. But I'll look into that. If there's a way we can help you, we're gonna help you. I mean, I think that... I speak for all the council on that. It's just, you know, like we talked in the office, Gary and Ron, I wish some... I wish there was an attorney out there that would really dig in and help.
I'm gonna let him take over.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I just wanted to let you know that's... Those are kind of the... I always... I also said in there, and we all agreed, Tony Alderman Williams said, hey, there might be... He wondered what the underlying issue is. We all trying to figure that out. Why are they doing this, besides greed?
What is the end game?
And we worry about... I worry about retaliation. That's a big one that I'm concerned about. If we push and push and push, well, what's for them to say, okay, we're gonna up it higher?
Doesn't matter.
But, you know, if you want us to go down that road, we'll be happy to.
There's no way anybody can meet this.
Yeah. But Gary, you've got the floor.
Yeah, I want to go back to the rent stabilization ordinance. It is not rent control. Rent control is illegal in the state of Illinois. We all know that. Obviously, you guys found that out. But I've had two attorneys tell me to bring this rent stabilization ordinance up to the city council, because that may very well be viable. The rents... With rent control, you're stopping any increase at all. It is controlled right there. We're not asking for that. The rent stabilization will route for increases, 10 to 15% a year. We want them to make money. We don't want them to lose their butts on the deal. That's not what we're here for. And if you're not in the business to make money, why are you in business at all? We have no problem with that. The problem we have is the excessive. If I were to do the two-year lease now, which I think was retaliatory, normally, if you do a two-year lease, it usually goes down. It doesn't go up $100. Okay? If I do that, it just doesn't make sense to me to do that, to be quite honest. That's ridiculous. Things have gone bad from worst. Our kids are not allowed outside past 8:00 now. They've imposed their own curfew. If they're below 14 years of age, they're not allowed outside after 8:00. It doesn't even get dark till 9:00 now. If you're 14 to 18, you must be inside by 10:00. Our kids are not allowed to play outside their yard. No more riding bikes. Can't play out in the road. We're a small subdivision, for crying out loud. Kids have played out there forever. We don't have that many kids, but what we do, they're great kids. I've never lost anything. I've never had any trouble with them. Why are they being impacted this way? It doesn't make any sense. Ron tested on that half-a-million-dollar insurance policy. We're supposed to put, get for them, in their name. They will take... They told us in the paperwork, which you have, your honor.
Yeah, they all... Everybody has that.
They put themselves in first position behind any mortgage company or bank. How in the world can they do that? Just because they say, that doesn't make it happen. That doesn't make it... And if I... I can't find an insurance company, and I haven't really looked, but if I did, what insurance company's gonna insure a modular or mobile home for a half a million dollars?
It's liability.
Huh?
It's liability.
It's crazy. Also, we're supposed to go put a promissory note. We're supposed to supply them with copies of titles. Of course, with a modular home, you have a title. We're supposed to supply them with copies of their titles, so they can go down to the mortgage company or whoever they want and get a promissory lien and put it on our house. Why in the world would I want to have a promissory lien on my house? I don't owe them anything. It doesn't make any sense. Rent increases for the next three years, Ron, can attest on that. No motorcycles are allowed anymore. They're not allowed in the park. Also, you're not allowed to have two more than two vehicles. I have two show cars. They're in my garage, thank goodness, or they wouldn't be allowed, and they may not be up... Of course, Sprattle knows about as far as that goes, but I'm already in noncompliance right there. That's crazy.
No, it is.
But I do urge you to look a little further. I did talk to two attorneys and one today, and they did feel the rent stabilization might be a viable option, because we're not gonna stop them from getting rate increases. We're just gonna slow them down and back them off a little bit, so they're not putting a lot of hardship on people. You know, a young lady back here, she may say something I don't know. She come down to my house a couple nights ago, or a couple days ago, in a panic. She has no idea what to do. The realtors already called her and told her the house is unsellable, so what are we to do? We can't... She can't pay the exorbitant lot rent, as far as I'm concerned. And that's a 365, and if it goes up over the next three years, we're looking at almost $600 a month. That's California lot rents, except for LA-based and San Francisco. The rents in Washington State are only $400 a month. The rents in South Carolina are $200. The rents in Pennsylvania average is $330 a month. Idaho is $297, and we're gonna be at 600? Lucky us, huh?
This stabilization is only for the, like, Rolling Acres and, you know, just not for the whole town, because of renting buildings.
Where...
It's a different story.
What attorneys are you...
You can move.
I mean, we can talk after the meeting.
Yeah, we will. I don't want to go into it right here.
I don't know what attorneys, where they can lead us to find out about this.
I know one attorney will be talking to you. I do know that for a fact.
Huh?
I do know one of my attorneys will be talking to you.
Okay, good.
Okay. I can't tell you, it's gonna be the day tomorrow, next week. He just got all the information, and he goes, holy smoke, who are these people?
Yeah, I'd be curious to...
Yeah, so I'm sure he'll be talking to you.
Yeah.
I think he wants to write a letter to the council itself, and I hope he'll have a chance to look at it. We're not trying to tell these people they need to go broke. We're just want an even shake here, for crying out loud. We're not a huge city with a huge industry structure. I strapped laid out last night, if they get their lot increased next year, and I talked to Jess Brattle about this, are they gonna do any improvements to the park? He said, no, Prairie Nole's is perfect, they're just gonna take the money and run. It's $378,000 out of our economy next year. If they get up to the 600, we're talking almost 3/4 million dollars coming out of this economy. We're telling 19,000 people, can we afford that? I can't imagine that we can. And if they take the houses and the people leave, then we've lost... They're not gonna buy groceries, they're not gonna buy refrigerators, they're not gonna buy anything tangible. They'll be leaving, they'll be gone. I don't know what their end game is. I really don't know. It just seems really odd to me, they're buying up a lot of little mobile home parks in obscure little areas, and they're trying to ride them roughshod like Genghis Khan. I don't understand. But I will get you more information on this rent stabilization. I think it may be viable. If it is, I would like, maybe the city attorney, and I really wished I could talk to him, he's been off, and I understand that. Maybe we could get an injunction to stop this madness, so we can all take a breath, and then maybe go forward with the ordinance and get it done. We're sure gonna try, and I'm gonna sit down, because there's probably some other people that might want to speak. I know the reverend does. I'm sorry I kept you longer than you probably wanted to be here, but I apologize. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
Thank you.
Reverend?
I'm Reverend Jonathan Warren, and I appreciate Chaplain Helen Bradish speaking to you earlier. And I guess, just, I hadn't realized all that was involved in lot rent. I'd read the paper, and I had talked to my mom about it, because she is part of a mobile park in Florida, and she had told me about it a little bit, and I hadn't realized exactly what's involved, but a lot of these folks own their homes, and then they rent the lots that are on it, which you probably all know. But the problem with that is, if you increase the lot rent exorbitantly, you've got a bunch uh, you've got a bunch of people who can't move their homes, who've been there for years and years. Uh, they're, the, a, and, and my fear is, uh, you know, folks are, they've still gotta live into, in a place, and so they're gonna pay their bills as much as they can, and then they're gonna be eating cat food or whatever it is, because a lot of them are on fixed incomes. Uh, someone was telling me that there's a, there's a single mom, uh, with, who, who works three jobs, uh, to afford where she is now. Uh, and, and so, for me, I appreciate you, uh, making all these efforts, mayor, and, and I just, uh, I, I don't really know where to go, but, uh, what I've discovered in this is, I know the law, and it's, and, oh, some of the things they're doing are obviously legal, but that's not fair. Uh, and I know that doesn't mean anything to a lawyer, uh, but, but it does matter to our town, um, to our folks. We wanna welcome businesses. We wanna encourage, a, and maybe, uh, the reality is, uh, folks haven't gotten much increases, and so, uh, so maybe that's the hardship of, how do you have a business in a town like this? Uh, but to take homes from people is, is, that basically, they would, it, they would evict folks out of their hu, out of their own home, because they're not paying the lot rent. And then they would either have to move it, which would cost about ten, eight to thirteen thousand dollars, depending on the, the place. Um, and, so, uh, so, uh, that's my concern, is that there's elderly, there's single moms, there's folks, you probably know, uh, a few of those folks who are there. Um, and, and so, it, you know, it's my mom. And, and so, that, that's why I, that's why I've tried to got, we've gotten about, I think, twelve chaplains or pastors in town, uh, who are certainly willing to make phone calls. I heard, uh, a, a, and these folks here, there's, this is just a small percentage of who showed up the other evening at a, at a town hall meeting. So, I, I don't have any, uh, major words, but I, I appreciate you hearing, uh, these folks and hearing us, and, and I urge you to find some way to, uh, work out a, a plan. Thank you.
Reverend?
Mr. Mayor, may I pass this around real quick?
Oh, sure, Gary.
This is, I found three of these in our neighborhood so far. We had a fire in March, and, I think that's on... And I've talked to the water department, and they said nothing they can do. Those are fire-logged. I have these three, five, the water company told me, and the justice water company said, "All right, out of order." They sent a letter to Jeff Spradlin two years ago, and he did nothing. I've asked for a copy of the letter. I haven't received it yet. But that's just to give you an idea.
We're aware.
Of what we're dealing with out there. And again, we're not trying to be awful people, but there's a fire that happened in March. Had there been any wind there, it would've kept them in there, because they couldn't get water. They finally fought this one with the water truck. Thank goodness they brought it in.
Yeah, no, I, well, Chief and I are, we're, we're at it.
Nobody will do anything. And there's been, there's been a report, the health department mentioned, there's been a report of rat sightings on that house. That's all we need now, is rats there.
Rats and mice. I've seen raccoons, sparrowcats. I haven't seen rats, thank goodness, but we do have mice now. God, I don't know what's gonna be next.
It's not...
Do you have any advice for us, uh, what we can do, uh, the best, uh, things we can do?
No, I mean, I really don't.
Could, I mean, if we can call, uh, the Attorney General, we'll get folks to call.
Yeah, that'd be a good start.
Do you need percentages of how many senior citizens there are and veterans in, in these places? 'Cause we can find those things.
Yeah, we can get that.
From my knowledge, from some people, some sources I've talked to, I think, uh, the greater number of people would call, uh, the better response here would, uh, I think that, uh, probably off the, off the, uh, system.
Okay. Do you think you can help?
Would it help if we sent them or gave them copies of all our petitions? A hundred and ten or something like that?
Well, gentlemen and ladies, we're desperate at this point. We really are. We're at our wit's end. I mean, like Reverend said, it's gonna cost me between fifteen to seventeen thousand just to move my home.
Yeah.
Doesn't count my garage. I've gotta go find land, probably put a septic, electric, so on and so forth. I'm looking at fifty thousand dollar hit, because these people wanna be idiots. It's not fair. It really is not fair. You know, I, I, I came back from Arizona when my dad got sick and my mother-in-law fractured her back, and my wife says, "You can buy this house or you can buy a motor home." I wish I got out of what, the motor home.
I mean, that's, that's upon, uh, maybe, uh, certain organizations or groups maybe taking advantage of, so you're, so, so that, so that could be a big...
Our next stop may be the Department of Aging. They wanna know about stuff like this.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are.
Paul, did you have, yeah, Paul, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I run my mouth too much.
I think most of you know I'm a real estate agent here in town. I represent a lot of these people out here and have for a very, very long time. I'm not a very good public speaker.
I'm not either, Paul.
But I need to talk for these people. They're sick. I've watched them. I'm worried about their health, and I will tell you, I've had their houses on the market, and I can't sell them. Nobody will call, and nobody will come and look. It's a problem.
Okay, any others, folks that wanna speak this time?
I would. They're also, uh, gonna tell us if we can have flower pots hanging from our porches, having them in the yard. We have to have them approved. We have to have our dogs, our pets approved before we can keep them, and if they say no, the pets have gotta go. Now, you've kept a pet, or some family member comes in and stays more than three days, we have to let them know that we have guests in our house.
Do you feel, so these are the new things that they?
Yes.
Okay, now, so, I think that might be kind of a, some leverage as far as letting the AG's office know that this is, this seems retaliatory to me.
It is.
And so, maybe that's kinda where we can hang our hat on, so to speak, for a while, to let the Department of Aging and the Attorney General's Office on all these, you know, kids not playing past eight, I mean, it, you know, motorcycles, I mean, I don't...
And I also talked to, I also talked to a judge today, and he said he cannot hear anything, because he's gotta be impartial, but what I did say, he said, "It sounds like they're trying to get rid of us so they can do something else or bring all new people in." There is not gonna be anybody that's gonna be able to do that, because they're gonna own the homes, and you're gonna pay the lot rent and stuff, or not the lot rent, but the interest on your house is gonna be more than what the lot rent is, and then time you're done, you're not gonna be able to fit, afford it. So this is all wrong, and somebody's got to be able to help us, even though the state of Illinois is letting this happen. There's a lot of other states. Maybe they're gonna learn from this before these guys go to Wisconsin, or Missouri, or Indiana, or all these other places. This is wrong. This is our community. They're never gonna be here. They're not gonna come here and spend a dime. They're just gonna take out, is all they're gonna do. So somebody has to be able to help us, somebody, if they wanna step up. And yes, I know that everybody knows Jeff Spradlin, and everybody is friends, and you're good old boys and everything, but somebody has to put a stop to this, because by law, he had to give us a year's notice.
Calm down.
And he didn't do that either. We did not find out until January that he was, had so, already sold the place.
Who's enforcing the rule? Jess, or...
He, every time you go to Jess, all he tells you is, "Don't worry about it. Don't worry about it. They won't do it."
Jess is on the payroll. He's their...
Yes.
Just sign the thing.
Well, my question's, then, you're saying the signature's for, for the cars, flower pots?
Yes.
Who approved it? Who are you saying?
The, the, the company in, in Florida.
In Florida.
Who will never be here.
So you have to...
Yes.
We don't know.
Yes.
But they have that stipulation.
They have that stipulation in there. We have to make sure we pay double rent this month on our lot, because they want four sixty-five plus four sixty-five, and we've never had a lease up to this point, and all of a sudden, we gotta have a lease signed by July thir, or fifteenth.
And we got the notice on the third. And that's illegal, because we have thirty days. Anytime you get a contract, decide...
To take it to a lawyer.
Thirty days to give it to a lawyer.
No, you don't even have to do that. You can look at the law. Uh, you, once you receive your lease, I showed it to the attorney today to verify this, it says right in there, "You have thirty days to say yea or nay. You're gonna sign it or not." And they delivered it to us on July third. Obviously, the fourth of July, we couldn't do anything. The rest of the week, couldn't do anything, 'cause everybody was on vacation. That's great, I'm wonderful. But in essence, we lost about five or six days right there, and they expect it back by the fifteenth. Um, my attorney told me today, said, "You don't sign nothing, period, nothing." He said, "This is one shady outfit." So...
I think from my perspective, uh, you know, until we have an opportunity to look at this rent stabilization ordinance, I'd encourage every resident out there to call the Attorney General's Office. File a complaint, every one of them.
We can Madigan's office?
Yes.
I've done it.
Everybody need, everybody needs to call.
We're, we're calling everybody we can possibly talk to, because this is, this is where we live. I mean, we like it in Jacksonville. We don't, we don't wanna be broken apart. We love our community. We all get along well. We're families. There's, there's seventy-eight, seventy-nine homes out there, eighty homes, and, and we'd like to do more for the community.
Gary, I think Don's trying to tell you, everyone needs to call, not just, not just a few.
Maybe, maybe with folks at Wolfland, pass out everybody the number, so everyone's on the same page.
Yeah, sure gonna try. It's a mess. It's truly a mess.
Why don't we send all of our petitions in, that everybody signed, and the new rules, and the old rules that they sent us in, in the May?
And then go down there, too.
And then go...
I think any information you can provide to them would be helpful, but I think that, that personal touch of you getting on the phone and making that phone call and actually talking to somebody and lodging your complaint is going to do more than, more good than anything.
Or do you get a, an answering machine, or...
I couldn't tell you.
Ron called once, and they said they'd send him a form. A form's not gonna do us any good.
Well, I didn't think, uh, there is a, um, really, as well, they need a contract. Um, this is what we're, uh, we're actually...
We would appreciate any help we could get, at this, at this point. We're, like I say, we're desperate.
Could you can share any phone numbers that actually work?
Yeah, I'll get ahold of you, Reverend. I mean, and Ron, I mean, the folks I talked to are you and Ron and Gary and Danny.
Thank you so much.
These are just hardworking people.
Oh, I know.
They're professionals, they're hard, I mean, they're, they're just hard workers.
They wanted to retire.
It's a great community.
That's really...
It's a great community, that's sad.
Yes, it is. We love it out there, but...
Any others, counsel?
I just wanna reiterate what the mayor said.
You can see our plight's pretty imminent at this point. We gotta do something.
I, I think, I'll, I can speak for the entire council, and, and the mayor said it, and I just wanna reiterate, we absolutely hear what you're saying. Our hearts are broken for you as well. Um, I think we all will work with the mayor to see what we can do, um, pass this information along to you, to try to give you the tools that you need to let your voices be heard. Um, we're, we've been working on this as well, and the, over the past two weeks, trying to gather information and, um, things, too. I know it probably feels like we're not doing anything, but we've been doing some things. Um, we're gonna continue doing things for you, and we're so sorry that this is happening to all of you.
Does everyone have a copy of that contract that I left?
Do we have a copy?
I have extra ones, in case you need it.
The information you gave me last Thursday, I'm, so, I think they got it. Do they have the rules also, Ron? I don't know if the rules were part of it.
I don't, I don't think the rules were a part of it, but I would be in...
I've got them here with the rules.
If you have an extra copy, I would like a copy of that.
The rules were.
Were they?
Yeah. Thank you.
For small print? Okay.
You got it, then. Well, I'm sure you did.
Okay, that'd be great.
And quite honestly, I moved out there not even two years ago, and I asked Jeff for a copy of the covenants and rules and so on and so forth, and the rules are basically one page, says, "Be a good neighbor, cut your grass, don't park your car in the yard," and so on and so forth, which we've complied with. Now we have fifty-eight different rules and four and a half pages worth. Not necessary.
Eighty-five, eighty-five rules.
Eighty-five rules.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, eighty-five rules.
But again, it makes no...
I'm dyslexic tonight.
It makes no sense to run people off, give them no alternative, unless there is some, something underlying. And when I said that today, I was very serious, because you don't put people out of their homes and make it to a point that they can't afford it unless there is something else that's underlying. And for, I, you know what, the, I've never seen this before.
I never have either.
I mean, that's, it's, it's... It's as, you know, I know law in itself may be on their side, but there has to be a moral issue...
I agree.
There is.
Uh, that we can look at.
It's, it's just crazy.
I, I wish, you know, when I talked to Danny, he called me that first time, I said, "From what I know, there's not a lot this city can do." I said, and I told him, I said, "Danny, you need to get a lawyer. You need to collectively get a lawyer that can fight this and keep the, his, his or her finger on the pulse." But now, it has escalated to a point that they're telling you, you can't have dogs, you can't have your kids out there. That's crazy.
Yeah, I mean...
You can't have a barbecue. You cannot have a fire on your property whatsoever.
If anyone wants to come to our cookouts, I'm sorry, they have been called off.
You better cook and bring it to us.
Guests can't park in your, only two cars allowed at your house. If you have guests, they can't park there. You have to go to designated parking area. There is no designated parking area. You can't park at a neighbor's house, in front of their house.
This is stuff I've never heard of before, would've never dreamed anybody could dream up, but...
Oh, they're dreaming.
You know, one thing is, Mr. Spradlin is saying, ignore it, you know?